Order, ask the city clerk to thaw the rule.
Alderman Hooper.
Fairly.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Hooper. Councilmember Burks Fraser.
Here.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Tollfree.
Present.
Councilmember Mosley.
Here.
And Councilmember Atkins.
Here.
All right, we have one hundred percent attendance, appreciate everybody being here. So we can conduct business, item four is the minutes of October the thirteenth, our last regular meeting.
Move that the minutes for October thirteenth be approved as emailed and received hard copy.
Second, are you? All right, got a motion, Councilmember Henderson, I think Councilmember Hooper is gonna get the second. And any question, discussion, correction, anything with the minutes? Motion is to approve. All those in favor, show of hands, please, I see six in favor, so the minutes are approved. That will bring us to the city clerk's report. I have been asked, urged, and begged not to make a whole lot of comments and go over all this in detail, so I'm gonna abide by the council's wishes. But obviously, if you got any questions on anything, we've got the statement of revenue and expenditures, which is by department, we need to act on that, so let's.
I move that the financial statement of revenue and expenditures be approved as received by hard copy. And if there are any questions, Alderman will ask at this time.
All right, got the motion, is there a second, seconded by Councilmember Mosley. Now, is there a question or discussion on the finances, and I will say this to the public, anybody wants to know any of this information after the meeting, or get a copy of it or something later, we'd be happy to make it available to you, I promise. Any question or discussion on the financial report? All in favor, show of hands. All right, council members, you also got there your packet, the city sales tax report, updated, and our portion of the county sales tax, and then the district court. So that's just for your information, but does anybody have any questions about any of it? I will say one thing, sales tax went up a little bit, our revenue did, so I was happy about that. Okay, we'll go to the mayor's report, I don't have a lot here, I want you to know we're still working on several industrial recruitment projects. And of course, we've still got some grants pending, particularly the West Side Pool and the Cultural Center at this time. Something that we did not have on the agenda, but it's a routine thing, and I'm gonna go ahead and just get y'all to approve this, if it's okay without objection, and that's a request to close the streets appropriately for the Christmas parade. So it's just a routine parade route, I believe, so everything's fine, but I would like to have a motion on that.
I motion that we close the street path for the Christmas parade.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, Councilmember Hooper, and seconded by Councilmember Mosley to take care of that. Anybody got a question or discussion of that? All in favor, show of hands, this is routine. All right, council member, do y'all have anybody you wanna recognize?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, the president of December the sixth.
Yes, ma'am, I believe that it's probably around there under your announcements on your agenda, but yes, I think that's correct. I believe it's at six o'clock. What time is it?
Seven.
Seven o'clock. All right, we got that on there wrong, so you need to mark your calendar. Christmas parade's December the sixth at seven P.M. So notice that. Okay, council members, do y'all have anybody to recognize, to speak? Has anybody signed in? Okay, nobody signed in, I do have one thing I'm gonna ask. Can you pass that around for me to give everybody, you take one of them. There's a, just a written comment, Mr. Rob Reek, who's here tonight, but he don't wanna speak, he just wants to give that to the council. It concerns a growing problem with cats, stray cats. We all know this has been going on for a while, and we've even started getting some, doing some research on it. I ask you to take any action, this is just for y'all to have, and he's asking y'all to take a look at this situation, see what we might be able to come up with to do. So I'm just presenting you that, but we don't have, no one else to speak, nobody signed in, okay. I thought we had somebody called in. I'm sorry?
Does this be referred to a committee?
Well, it can be, if you wish to go ahead and do that, yes.
Or police?
I think you should go to the police.
It's a law enforcement matter.
I move that the information relating the cats be referred over to the police committee for study.
Second.
That's an appropriate motion, who made the second? Uh, Councilmember Atkins, okay. That's just a sign to get to the police committee to take a look at it. Any question or discussion on that motion? All in favor, show of hands, please, six in favor, thank you. All right, I thought we had somebody called in, did we not?
They're not here.
Okay, we'll move on. All right, administrative and standing committees, police chief? Know you out there somewhere.
I'm here, I'm here.
All right, chief, you're recognized, you've got a written report in your packet.
Yes, we have, and I know you guys have a copy of my monthly report for activity of October twenty twenty-five. As you can tell, our numbers are getting a little bit better as far as the patrol division goes. Hopefully, Officer the Semi Academy, he's done his last two weeks, he had his final test this week, and as of November the twenty-first, he should be graduating from the academy. So we'll be getting other certified officers back, so that'll help us out with our certified numbers. And we have one individual that we're gonna send to the next academy that starts January the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-six. Personally, our numbers aren't getting better.
We considerably better than we have been a few times, so that's good news. And fortunately, we found a couple of certified people too, that we don't have to send to the academy, which is always good, 'cause that takes some time. Questions for the chief? Yeah, Mr. Tollfree.
Uh, chief, that incident that happened over in King's Court Square, did anybody get injured out of that?
One.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, anything else?
But that was one of the reasons why I was talking about on Bragg Street, that we needed to do something about that, because it was so congested, and nobody could even get around. And they had problems getting emergency vehicles down that road. Thank you, chief.
Where were we talking about, Mr. Tollfree, you said?
Right down Bragg Street behind the Powerhouse Church.
Oh, that project's underway.
We wrote that up last night.
That's underway.
Yeah, that's what they.
Already started doing some work.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm just saying that was the reason why something like that happened.
Yes, sir.
She just praised me, she wasn't in a bed.
That's right, if she had been there, we'd have been here.
Okay, that's the police committee, Councilmember Burks Fraser, you got anything you need to say?
No, sir, we had a meeting scheduled, but the chief was out six, and I didn't reschedule it, so we'll get one this month.
All right, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Fire chief? I saw him out there too, so I know he's there. All right, chief, likewise, they've got a couple of pages from you, your regular reports, and an update on some of the places we're building, so go ahead.
We had a fairly busy month, so four fires and two education calls. We had our regular meeting on the sixth of October, and got everybody that needed recertified in first aid, and C.P.R., and A.B.'s recertified, so that's been our sum. And then we had our engineer, Brandon Baker, resigns, fix about October thirtieth, and we were able to have a civil service meeting, and we hired a new engineer, Bobby Sawyer. He's got several years of experience, and been through the fire academy, and he's with the work this past Friday, so we were able to get that filled quickly.
Where's he from, chief?
Monticello. Only have to kiss him with his head, sir. But he is very qualified, he's got.
Okay, what about the, anything you need to say about any of these places that we're trying to get insurance paid?
I have not received any response back from the letter that I sent to those.
And are these dates over here when the letters were sent?
I think they were when the fire occurred.
When the fire occurred, okay. All right, and then yeah, one more thing there, I think you're giving information about a new volunteer firefighter.
Yes, sir, and we did put on, we did put on a new volunteer, I forgot about that new couple. As well as Bobby.
Do we still have vacancies in the volunteer fire department?
We have one.
Anybody, I'm gonna do a free advertisement here, anybody out there that has an interest in getting involved with the Warren Fire Department, we think have some thirty-three positions, volunteers, we got an opening. Charlotte would like to apparently become a volunteer firefighter, that's a hint up there. So the only trouble is she'd jump up and run out of the office every time we have fire calls. But seriously, do you know of anybody, anybody does, or please send them to see the chief, we're still out of position, but we'd be happy to try to fill. All right, chief, is that any other questions? All right, thank you. Fire committee, Mr. Tollfree.
None at this time.
All right, sanitation, Mr. Johnson. He's gonna have several sheets of paper in there for you and different things, but I'll go ahead and go with.
Anybody have any questions or anything, just give me a holler, I was trying to explain. We currently have two openings at the sanitation committee, I mean sanitation department.
What openings are those?
We have a driver and a store full-time parole condition open.
Okay. Y'all can see what he's got in there, it's just for everybody's information, we picked up seventy-three residences, we picked up junk, and fifty-four limb removals. This is in addition to your regular garbage pickup, okay, this is all, all extra. And then you've removed five more inoperable vehicles, this is for the past month.
Month of October, yes, sir.
And you don't have any new properties to condemn?
No, sir, not at this time.
Sanitation committee, you got any, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Henderson.
How many units have you been with the city altogether?
Uh, Miss Darby, thirteen.
Thirteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's combine and vote with each other. Thank you.
Councilmember Atkins, you got anything you wanna comment on?
So we haven't met yet, and it'll be after Thanksgiving, I'm sure Miss Johnson will give us an update on the work team item. We have an agenda.
We are out to bids, so I know you know that, but just so everybody, I think that's the twentieth?
Twentieth, yes, sir.
Twentieth of November, we will have the bids in on our collection system, and then something to look at at that point, certainly, that your committee will need to discuss, probably along with a number of other things, but certainly that.
Something, something real quick, hopefully today, we finally got all the cans out to all the residents in Warren that have a water bill, and certainly, we hope we got all of them. We do not have the cans out for the housing authority. I made a mistake, I'll take full responsibility for that, when I went to the water office to get the count for the cans, they count each one of those as one, not as individual. I was unaware of that, so we are short on cans, but we're working on that, and then we're gonna see how the other thing goes before we do anything else. But that's where we are now, but hopefully today, everybody that spoke to have a can, got a can, so.
That include Quinn River?
Yes, yes, yes.
All right, now we're still picking up garbage at the housing authority, I mean, we're not gonna stop doing that, but it's just each one of the units does not have their own deal. We're talking with the housing authority how the best way is to do that anyway, I believe, so.
Right, yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, go on to your building official, I mean, you got a thing in there on permits and all that?
Yes, sir, we've got about thirty-eight building permits, forty-six electrical, and thirty-four plumbing permits. Valuations are as follows there on the sheet.
We have no new properties, press council action to clean up, but would you report on the ones we are working on that we?
Okay, the ten oh seven Phillips, and number seven Southern Court, and eleven ten Finister. Eleven ten Finister, we have, we have taken it off the list because the work, in my opinion, has been completed, and the owner has been very cooperative in doing everything that the city's asked. And at this point, I feel like he's came in compliance. However, on ten oh seven Phillips and number seven Southern Court, they are still out of compliance, and we turned everything over to the court as far as the ordinance numbers to get the law passed on what it would be, and now we're currently issuing a citation to bring them to court. So they've got all the rules and regulations pertaining to the ordinance, and the fine, and what you're gonna do, so. The only thing we actually gotta do right now is hand the citation to them, which will be done this week, so.
But what he's saying, the court's not setting the rules, but they wanted all this information, because they have not been acting on any of these cases before, and they wanted the local ordinances and all, so they could rule on these things as they come before them. So we had a good bit of work to do at their request to get them prepared to hear to the cases. And that's what Rob's referring to, so it's happening. I know it's taking a long time, but it's happening, we're gonna issue those citations, and then see what we can do to get, and future ones, and future ones that will come up. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Johnson on anything, building code, sanitation? Just make sure you're clear, of course, we got both drop-off centers for our recyclables, our functioning, North Edbury Street, as well as down here by the fire department. And I want to continue to urge the public, please do not put clean cardboard and paper in your garbage. Recycle it, you got two options basically to do it. Just drop the stuff off at one of those two drop-off centers, that's all you gotta do. If you got a truckload of it, call the sanitation department. And please help us to talk to your constituents, council members. And if it's, if it's a big load, and they just can't drop it all off, if they will call us, we will schedule a pickup to get the cardboard, we do not want cardboard thrown in our garbage. It costs us all money when that happens. So that's, that's working, and we're gonna do some more advertising, we've started, but we're gonna, we're gonna do even more. All right, if there's not any other questions for Mr. Johnson, I'll move ahead. Street foreman, Mr. Hearns Berger, is taking part in the national holiday. Does anybody wanna know what that is?
Deer thing.
Deer hunts, he planned this a long time ago. I can tell you that his crew's working, he's still got people working. We're trying to do a lot of maintenance work, and as I said earlier, we have started on the Brad Kelly Street intersection that y'all have already approved. And that's some work underway there. Street committee, Councilmember Mosley.
I did not have anything to report.
We've got three items there, leaving them on the agenda for further recommendations from the committee. Parks and Recreation Director, Kyle Wagon, showed up to work today, and he was sick as a horse. And I made him go to the doctor, and he came back and said they told him they thought he might have had a little pneumonia. And so we talked on the phone a few times, he's still trying to keep up with some things, but I sent him home and told him not to come tonight, okay, but you got his report, I believe, there in your packet, yes. One thing I wanted to point out to you, I think it's self-explanatory, but I want you to look at the second page, where it says shooting range. And he listed on there U.A.M., of course, and they have paid us one half of the fee, I guess they're gonna pay it in pieces, but they've paid us three thousand out of six thousand dollars that we contracted with them to use the shooting range. And we had another group that rented it out on the fifteenth of October. What he didn't put on there, which I kept telling him, I wanted how many people went out there, it's just individuals, and used the place in October, one hundred and thirty-three, you can write that, that place is booming, but it's the time of year as much as anything, but, so the rest of it, I think you can see there. If anybody's got a question, I'll try to answer it or get you an answer, but I don't know it.
That was a hundred and thirty-three just in October, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yes, individuals, it may be same person fifteen times, but if you understand what I'm saying, a hundred and thirty-three different times, Mr. Tollfree.
Do we have a listing anywhere out in the public, the hours and days that they're selling?
It's on our website, I don't know, well, I think we have advertised it, but we don't keep a constant advertisement running.
Because I've had several people calling asking the days, and now with the.
But it is on our website, I know that, and we can, yeah. All right, thank you. Community Ag� Development Committee, Councilmember Hooper.
Um, we didn't have a chance to meet, but we will meet Thanksgiving and be ready to definitely address the annexation proposal.
Okay, that's annexation on the industrial properties, what, on Highway one eighty-nine, and then there's some other things there if they're still working on as well. Okay, let's just go right to Ways and Means Committee, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, the Ways and Means Committee have actually six items listed on our agenda. We met on November third at five P.M. here in the municipal courtroom. Well, actually, we were over in the chamber, we started over here, and there was a conflict, so we moved over to the chamber conference room, and it was very cozy in there.
And we thanked the chamber for allowing us to do that.
And we certainly thanked the chamber for allowing us to be in their conference room. Last year this time, we did not have smiles on our faces for city employees. But when I give the update of the proposed budget, because we have actually just started, I will share that information. The first item we have listed is the twenty twenty-five Christmas bonus and holiday pay that you do have in your packet. And if you would look at the actual employees, on the last page, it says Christmas bonus, and then it gives the actual dollar amount that we will be recommending in the various categories. Under the less than one year, and the city council, and all of our part-time employees, we have twenty-three. Elected officials and full-time employees with one year but less than five, twenty-three employees. Five years but less than ten, we have eight, ten years but less than fifteen, five. And we did not have anyone for the fifteen years but less than twenty years. We did ask the administration to go back and research just to ensure that we had everyone in their correct category. Twenty years but less than twenty-five years, we have three. And twenty-five years or more, two individuals. And as I previously stated, the dollar amount for each of those individuals is listed on the back sheet. Again, we did have a couple of people that we moved to the appropriate category, and we are praying and hoping that everyone is in the category. If you will remember, we did update the personnel policy to reflect combining the years of service, just as APRA's do for any employee that work and leave and come back, et cetera, or be a regular employee and become elected official. So I move that the Christmas bonus for twenty twenty-five be paid in the amount of twenty thousand, six hundred, forty-nine dollars and twenty-nine cents, which includes the FICA and retirement for those employees, that is my motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion, the chair first for the committee, and Mr. Tollfree seconds the motion. Is there any discussion or question concerning the motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, which is to approve, show of hands, please, I see six in favor, thank you.
Okay, the next item listed on the agenda is the vehicle insurance. And it appears that we already have a credit in the amount of one thousand, two hundred, forty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents. So I move that we pay the vehicle program in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred, fifteen dollars and eighty-seven cents. Second.
Okay, I think Councilmember Burks Fraser got the second in, if I heard it right. And this is with the Arkansas Municipal League, which is by far the best thing we've been able to find for our insurance, I assure you. Question or discussion on this motion, this is to renew our vehicle insurance? All favor, show of hands, I see six in favor, okay?
Okay, item number three that is listed on your agenda is still under study, the new revenue for safety. We definitely would like to pursue avenues that we can in the future move forward with. Some type of revenue is, it relates safety for the city of Warren, and this would help boost our finance within the city government. Now, the twenty twenty-six budget is in progress, you do have a handout. I'm not going to go over each item with you tonight, but I do want you to know that, as I previously stated, we are smiling because this particular proposed budget does have a two percent increase for our city employees minus the elected officials. Within our budgeting process, we asked about equipment, police cars, et cetera. The only thing that was listed and shared with us was one police car, Taser, and possible computers. We also requested information relating any other income that we have within the city, such as rent, such as the old armory, the depot, et cetera. We was given that information. Also, we asked how we could receive some revenue as it relates our baseball complex, and the mayor of the administration is working on visiting and working out some type of an agreement as it relates some revenue coming in there. What state government and federal government do as it relates funding is utilize the unfilled positions, and that is something that the city is looking at doing in the upcoming year, is unfunded positions will also loosen up some dollars because those individuals are not there, their benefits are not there, salaries, et cetera. So we will share more on the budget, we will be meeting probably once or twice in December. It is our goal to have our budget passed in the month of December. So I'll pause and see if there are any questions from any of the. Okay, if no questions, keep your document, we will keep you updated. We will, uh, keep you updated and go into more detail after we have our second and third meeting, uh, prior to our meeting, uh, in December. And again, we would like to pass the budget in December, although we do have it to February. But, uh, if we have all of the data, there is no reason that we cannot take care of it in the month of, uh, in the month of December. No questions, any questions, Mr.? Okay, all right, then the next item, um, that I would like to, uh, share is the bidding purchase. And if you will remember, uh, we talked about, uh, the Arkansas Code fourteen dash fifty-eight dash three oh three, B three, that actually, uh, changed the actual, uh, bidding, uh, raising it from thirty-five thousand to forty-two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one. Uh, the administration is recommending that we, uh, raise ours to twenty-five thousand, um, and, well, not to exceed twenty-five thousand, and the committee, uh, actually, uh, concur. So what is our ordinance number?
Nine seven four.
I move that ordinance number nine seven four be placed on its first reading. And again, that is raising, uh, this to twenty-five thousand dollars. The state law allows up to go up to forty-two thousand, nine twenty-one, but where this ordinance is, uh, the change will be going to twenty-five thousand.
Are you making that in the motion?
That was, that was my motion. I move that we place ordinance number nine seventy-four on its first reading, and my committee needs to wake up.
I'll tell you, I thought you were talking second. I thought y'all were still talking.
We weren't.
The committee needs to wake up.
I'm listening.
All right, cap, this is a recommendation from the committee, but it's, uh, motion made by Councilmember Henderson, seconded by Councilmember Burks Fraser.
That was me.
And, uh, I did want just to add, uh, if you, I may have missed, she might have said this. Our local amount that's currently in law is thirty-five hundred dollars.
It's in the first paragraph.
Oh, yes, we'll see that, but I just want y'all to understand, we're raising the cities from thirty, if you do this, thirty-five hundred to twenty-five thousand. But the state was already way higher than that, allowed us to go higher, and then they've even raised it. So this is proposed, uh, let's see, we got a motion and second for the first reading. Uh, is there any question or discussion of that motion? All in favor is first reading, show of hands, please. I see six in favor. Uh, this be proposed ordinance, uh, nine seventy-four. Whereas ordinance number seven eighteen of the city of Warren, Arkansas, authorizes the mayor or his duly representative to make purchases of supplies, equipment, materials and so forth that not exceed the sum of three thousand, five hundred dollars, and enter the contracts for work or labor that do not exceed the sum of three thousand, five hundred dollars without competitive bidding. Whereas Arkansas Code, uh, fourteen fifty-eight three oh three B three, the current statutory pre-bid, uh, purchasing threshold for years twenty-twenty-five until January one, twenty-thirty for cities of the first class, has been raised from thirty-five thousand dollars to forty-two thousand, nine twenty-one to account for inflation of goods and services that may be purchased by cities without competitive bidding. Whereas it would benefit the city to take advantage of these increased limits. Now therefore be ordained by the City Council of City of Warren, Arkansas, section one. That ordinance number seven eighteen of City of Warren, Arkansas, is hereby amended as follows. The mayor or his duly authorized representative shall have exclusive power and responsibility to make purchases of all supplies, apparatus, equipment, materials, and other things requisite for public purposes for the city of Warren, and make all necessary contracts for work or labor to be performed, and all material or other necessary things to be furnished for the benefit of the city for the amount of expenditure for any purposes or contract that does not exceed the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars. Section two, the amount of expenditures for any purchase or contract which exceeds the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars, the mayor or his duly authorized representative shall invite competitive bids thereon by legal advertisement, any local newspaper. Bids received pursuant to said advertisement shall be opened and read on the date set for receiving said bid in the presence of the mayor or his duly authorized representative, together with any committee that is named by the mayor of the governing body for this purpose. The officials designated to receive such bids shall have exclusive power to award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, provided however the mayor and any committee designated to receive bids may reject any and all bids received. See a typo on bids there, I'm sorry. Uh, section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Section four, whereas state law, another typo, sorry, uh, lot of state laws require the establishment of a procedure for municipal purchases under twenty-five thousand. This ordinance being necessary for the immediate protection of the public health and safety and emergencies hereby declared to exist, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and approval.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine seventy-four on its second reading. Second.
Okay, quest, uh, motion and second's made, placed on second reading, suspend the rules, and placed on second reading, any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor. This would be proposed ordinance nine seventy-four. That's, that's reading it right there the second time, so.
I move that we suspend the rules and place ordinance number nine seventy-four on its third and final reading. Second.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Burks got it in there, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's the third reading, motion second placed on its third and final reading. Any question or discussion on this motion? All in favor, show of hands. So that passes for the third time and.
I move that we adopt ordinance number nine seventy-four. Second.
Motion's made and seconded to adopt proposed ordinance nine seventy-four.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause.
Wait a minute, I think we got to vote on the ordinance first, I'm sorry. Bless, I got out of line here. Let's vote, let's vote on the adoption of the ordinance. All in favor, show of hands. That's six in favor, now.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause. Second.
Okay, motion second for the emergency clause, which of course would put it in effect immediately. Question, discussion on that motion? All in favor, show of hands. Six in favor. And as I, but thank you, that takes care of that. Uh, just so everybody, I know the council knows this, but I want everybody else in the public to understand it. This doesn't mean we don't get bids on stuff up to twenty-five thousand dollars. We can just go, we don't have to advertise it, we don't have to go through all that formal stuff. We can get proposals and the city council still has to prove it. Okay, that's, that's what this talks about, okay? Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Henderson?
No, that ends our report for this meeting. And again, we will, um, meet prior to the next council meeting, probably one, two times. And, uh, there are a couple of things that need to be tweaked within the, uh, the budget, proposed budget that we received. And again, we would like to pass the budget in the month of December.
Thank you.
And congratulations, when we pass it, uh, city employees getting that bid to proceed.
Councilmember Henderson kept, been telling me for months, produce some magic. I don't know if we have or not, but we're trying, so. Our people certainly do need a raise, because they didn't even get one in twenty-twenty-five. So it's not much, but we're trying to.
No, and, and I'm just glad we were able to keep the Christmas bonus and the tenure bonus for the employees. So in twenty-six, they will get the tenure bonus, the Christmas bonus, as well as the, you know, two percent. And some people, I mean, you know, with state government, didn't get a raise at all.
Okay, let's go to item eight, our boards and reports of business of boards and commissions. And your, uh, don't have a whole lot of things in your packet. Here's Parks and Recreation. They have not met since our last meeting, but I do have two appointments. I am recommending, this both be, be voted on. I am recommending the reappointment of Ms. Elaine Wright. She's already on the Parks and Recreation Commission, done an excellent job. I'm nominating her for another five-year term.
I, I move that, uh, Ms. Wright be approved for a reappointment for a five-year term on Parks and Recreation.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Tollfree, motion was made by Councilmember Henderson. Any question or discussion? This is a appointed position for a five-year term. All in favor, show of hands. I see six in favor. We got a vacancy, uh, a term that's run out. Uh, I'm nominating for appointment, Mr. Matt Young. This will be a new appointment. Uh, I think most of y'all probably know him, but he is, uh, uh, works for the school system, is an administrator. And, uh, fairly young guy, uh, and, uh, has a, has an interest in, in serving. So I'm nominating Mr. Matt Young.
I move that we accept Matt, or Matt Young's appointment to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term of five years.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
I'll, I'll yield to her.
Okay, all right, Councilmember Mosley, you're gonna get the second, okay? That's all right. Question or discussion of this nomination?
I'm just glad to see, uh, younger millennials, young adults wanting to work in state government, uh, on any level. They're the future.
Need to, I agree. Okay, all in favor of this appointment, show of hands, please. I see six in favor, thank you very much. Planning Commission, we don't have anything there, uh, any minutes or report. Aviation, uh, no meeting, but we do have another appointment. Uh, this is a reappointment of Mr. Rick Strasner, who is already on the Aviation Commission. He is a pilot that uses the airport. We always have tried to keep, you know, pilots, at least one pilot on there, and I'm reappointing him or nominating him to a five-year term.
I move that, uh, Rick Strasner be, uh, reappointed for a five-year term on the Aviation Commission. Second.
All right, motion Henderson second, Mosley. Question or discussion of this nomination? All in favor, show of hands, please. Wait a minute, I didn't get everybody. Everybody in favor, show a hand, please. Thank you, six in favor, thank you. All right, Water and Sewer, do have minutes of their meeting of, uh, September twenty-fifth. And also their financial statements from back in September. They're always a little covered behind, and that, that's for your information, Councilmembers. No action required. You'll go to the next item. You've got the, uh, minutes of the Warren Housing Authority Board of Commissioners, Tollfree.
Uh, with the federal shutdown, is that gonna affect, uh, section eight or the employee, I mean, or the tenant?
It, it could, uh, I've been asking that question pretty much for the last forty days, and they keep telling me, well, they're just talking to the local housing authority folks. They're concerned, but not sure. So far, it has not. But they're concerned that it's, uh, you know, it keeps going, that it will. Now, my understanding is, y'all probably hear in the news too, that we may be, uh, Councilmember Henderson's extremely excited, because it also affects VHS in the state of Arkansas, but that, that hopefully this is coming to an end.
Through January.
Yeah, through January. But to answer your question, we have not been hit yet. I mean, so far, they've been getting their subsidies and, uh, you know, the Housing Authority, of course, a lot, they get subsidies from FUD, uh, for the low-income people and elderly that live in, in those units. And then the section eight program is for privately owned rental property that gets subsidized for people that are of low income, and so far, it's all functioning. But the. But it is a concern, yes.
But the community action cut downs and loss of funds.
That, they, they have, they've been hit hard. Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, you know, they've, they've canceled their, uh, they were renting a little bit of space from us in the old armory over there, and they've, they've had to cancel it. They don't have the money and, yeah.
The electrical.
They, they've, they've been hit, I think several of their programs have been hit.
Yes, it has.
Pretty good, so I'm not sure about all of it, but, yes. And that could also affect jobs, not, not just, not just the services, but.
It's already affecting folks lost a job. I just hope it don't affect the HESI program also.
Yeah, that's, theoretically, could happen.
Yeah, my, my little rent stake goes there, and they're not sure.
Gonna need that.
They go down by through the end of December, is what she told us.
I know ABC lost the program that they had.
Well, you got the minutes, this is again, just for your information, good, good question to ask, uh, but Housing Authority, don't think it says anything in there, I've read over it, but.
I didn't see it.
But you can, you can see that, that's from October twenty-seventh, when the, when the board, uh, authority met. So that's for your information. Cultural Center, you've got, uh, just a report on that, nothing different there right now. Uh, we don't have any unfinished business unless I have forgotten something, and I don't think we have. New business, uh, you do have a, just a one-page memo there under new business, revise zoning code. And, uh, don't think I put me out beside it, but I didn't want to present it. Uh, I'm gonna ask that this be referred to whatever appropriate committee y'all think it needs to be referred to. We talked about this a little bit in the past, it's just what it's about. Mr. Von Tonglen, that's a consultant with the Municipal League that comes in and helps us from time to time on, on, uh, planning and zoning matters. And, you know, he met with our Planning Commission, uh, some time back, and he said, "Y'all really need to take a serious look at some revisions with some professional help," because he said, "There've been some changes in state law." And it even deals with things like the tiny houses and things like that that we've been, you know, been talking about in the past. So you see a, a letter there, he's recommending that we, we do this study, he will help us. It will cost not to exceed four thousand dollars, that's for his services. He'll try to make it out, plead with you, keep it down to a minimum, because we don't have a lot of money to pay for something like this. But we need some expertise like his to help tell us what we can and can't do and should do, or recommendations at least. So I'm gonna ask you to refer this to the, uh, uh, Community Economic Development Committee, and then let them look at this and, and, you know, come back with a recommendation that we enter this agreement with them to do this or not.
I make a motion, we refer it to the Community Economic Development Committee.
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Tollfree, seconded by Councilmember Atkins. Is there any question or discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please. We got six, do I have six? Okay, six in favor. All right. Uh, let me give you all the announcements here. Make sure we got all this right, got a lot of stuff going on the next two months, obviously. Municipal building will be closed tomorrow. This building will be closed tomorrow for Veterans Day. And that'd be, while I'm saying that, to tell everybody, there will be a Veterans Day program tomorrow. I believe it's at the elementary school, uh, at ten o'clock. I think the public's invited, so just let everybody know that. Uh, we won't pick up trash tomorrow, we'll not pick up trash tomorrow. Uh, item two, Municipal Building will be closed November twenty-seventh to twenty-eighth for observance of Thanksgiving. Two days for that. Be no trash pickup on Thanksgiving Day, but the other days will be as regular, picked up. That's our, our plans. Christmas Parade, we've already talked about, December the sixth at seven o'clock, downtown Warren. Then just to get a jump on it, let everybody know about, uh, December, Municipal Building. This is all by personnel policy, and they will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in observance for the Christmas holidays. No trash pickup on Christmas Day, but we will pick it up on Christmas Eve. That's our plans, unless y'all tell us to do something different. And then, uh, just reminding you again, in January is the Municipal League Winter Conference, so if anybody that's planning on going, go fourteenth through the sixteenth, please let us know so we can get you registered in advance and get all the discounts and all that. All right? Have I skipped anything? Um, oh, it's something that's not on here, but I did want to, to tell you all this. The dedication of the new trees downtown. They're not all here yet, but we hopefully. just the next short period of time, they will be. We've set a dedication service for these new trees of being memory of John B. Frazier III. This is all, of course, being donated by Miss Mary Beth Frazier, the Frazier family. They're donating the cost, the installation of the trees. Once they're put in, they will be the city's property and ours to maintain. But she donated all. And we've got a dedication service set for November the 26th. November the 26th, 11:00 a.m., right in front of Warren Bank. Or right on that intersection there, Cypress and Main Street. And it's open to the public. We're inviting everybody to come. Certainly a Chamber of Commerce, you'd help us let everybody know on that, appreciate it. Many of the people we can get, board, members, everybody. It will not be a long, drawn-out service, but will be a brief dedication in honor of John B. Frazier III. So I want to make sure everybody got that on their calendar. Then we got item 12, pay the bills for October.
I move that the bills be paid for the month of October as presented in our packet.
Second. Motion's made with a strong second from Mr. Tollfree. Is there any, any question or discussion? You got all of them listed there. A chunk of money and a lot of stuff, but you can look at it and see what all we've, we've had to do. Any question? All in favor, show of hands, please. I see six in favor. So approval of the bills, our next meeting, regular scheduled meeting, December the 4th will be the agenda meeting. And December the 8th will be the December council meeting. If I left anything off, it needs action. If not, go to the authority grant to be by the City Council, the rules, we adjourn.
You did a great job.
Awesome job.
Great job, great job.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all all. Appreciate everybody being here.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm gonna ask him to put it on the agenda.
All right, everybody, thank you. I actually do that, we do that less than a hour.
Let's see. Yeah, because, oh yeah, it will be, it will be decorated. But the school's coming in.